It's kind of slowing everything down. Why are you being this way?
Freddie Madison's here. Hello, Jennifer.
Hello, everyone.
It's just really annoying. Okay, forget it. Forget it. Forget it.
Julian joined. We're muted.
Okay. I can see that. If I can, I can work with what I have if, once Miranda is ready, if she's ready, she probably is.
Yeah, we're ready to go.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I think we've got just about everybody. We can give it one more minute for a few more members to join. Is Cynthia, are we expecting everyone tonight?
No, I did.
Billy's the only one who can't join.
Steph is pairing, so couldn't join, but um, maybe that was when it was on the 23rd and I see she is here, so.
I just joined.
Only Billy.
Stephanie.
Okay, awesome. And we have Linda on the phone, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I am on you.
I don't see Stephanie or Billy yet.
So Billy won't be here and Stephanie is here.
I am here.
So.
Oh, she is. Oh, wait a minute, I actually is, I didn't scroll down enough. Yeah, there you are. There you are. Perfect. Okay, well, I guess we should be about ready to go then. So Cynthia, if you're ready, let's call to order.
Sure. Planning Commission meeting is called to order on March 30th, 2022 at 7:03 PM.
Thank you. Would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Chair Williams.
Uh, here.
Vice Chair Reese.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Blakemore.
Here.
Commissioner Glasser.
Here.
Commissioner Herring.
Here.
Commissioner Cornell.
Here.
Commissioner Per- Paray.
Here.
And please note for the record that Commissioner Giblin is absent tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the February 23rd meeting. Has everyone read the minutes and does anyone have any comments, changes, edits, et cetera? If not, um, did we have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Motion to approve, this is Roger Cornell.
I'll second.
Marissa, I second.
But Karen or Vice Chair Reese?
I think I'd beat Jim to that.
Okay. All right. We will go down. Uh, Commissioner Paray? Oh, you were absent at the last meeting, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, yep, I was in there.
Abstain.
You abstain.
Abstain.
Commissioner Cornell?
Yes.
Commissioner Herring?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yep.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blakemore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Chair Williams? Chair Williams?
Uh, yes.
I think, I think you're talking on my end or your end.
I'm sorry, did you hear me?
I am now. Is that a yes?
Yes.
Great, okay. An abstention from trustee Taylor. All right.
Thank you very much. Approval of minutes is approved. Um, we'll move on to public comment. Does anyone have any comments or anything they'd like to bring up to the Planning Commission that is not on tonight's agenda? Anyone from the public? Okay, hearing nothing, uh, we will move on. We do not have any, um, action items this evening. We just have two discussion items, um, to bring up. The first, uh, is the keeping animals ordinance and I believe, um, Miranda, you'll introduce this for us.
I will, yes, good evening. Uh, so before you is a request from the Board of Trustees that the Planning Commission assess, um, possible zoning limitations for animals to ensure their health and safety. So let me provide a little backstory here. Um, there were some Netherlands residents that came forward and contacted town about the need to change the Netherlands municipal code as it relates to keeping animals. Currently, the code only speaks up to chickens, horses, and llamas, and these residents felt like the code should specifically include other domestic livestock and that it ideally should dictate how many animals someone could have on their lot based on lot size. Um, in addition to a possible zoning amendment, these residents felt like Chapter 7 and Chapter 6 needed to be evaluated with regards to health and sanitation standards and possible permitting. Um, these residents did provide, uh, kind of a cover sheet and some possible code changes, so we did bring that to the Board of Trustees back in March. Um, ultimately, they felt that they wanted to start with the Planning Commission to see if you felt that it would be appropriate to start to investigate zoning limitations. I want to offer kind of a key piece here that if there were to be any zoning limitations applied, it would be only to ensure the health and safety of the animals. So we definitely need to tie it back to that and not just have some sort of arbitrary number of X amount of, of a certain type of livestock. It should very much be health and safety oriented. Um, recommendation here before you is if you decide to move forward, that you want to explore this more, we are recommending that a subcommittee be formed, ideally of two commissioners, like we did subdivision in marijuana, um, where we could look at what that meant in terms of the possible health and safety zoning limitation. Um, so, so in this aim, I provided kind of a proposed timeline. Should you be interested in going that route? But really, kind of bigger than that, I think my first question before you is, do you agree this is something the Planning Commission feels is important to address? Ultimately, that's something the board wanted to know is whether this, you felt like code needed to be clarified more. Um, I'm also curious if you have any preliminary feedback about possible amendments to the zoning code. I would caution that I don't think, I, I would like to see that a subcommittee do the bulk of the work, um, but any preliminary thoughts? And then if you do want to move forward with any possible zoning amendments, who would serve on that subcommittee? Uh, Commissioner Giblin had already stated that if we were to move forward with that subcommittee, he is interested in serving. Um, so, so Chair Williams, that's kind of my super brief introduction and I'll kick it over to you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, we've had quite a bit of, uh, input on this issue, uh, as you can see in the packet and I'd see a number of folks have joined us, which is good. Uh, so we will open it up, uh, to the public here in a minute. Um, I would just like to first, um, summarize a little bit that I would like the public to, to, um, you know, uh, please try to stay within three minutes, uh, for allotted talk, so we have enough time for everyone to speak. And please try to focus your thoughts towards the questions before us, which essentially are whether or not, um, we need to, uh, proceed with updating, uh, the animal, keeping animal ordinance, um, and, and even provide some suggestions on perhaps how we should move forward. So with that, let me open it up, uh, to the public and then we'll go back to the Planning Commission. Uh, I'll remind everyone, this is a discussion item, so we can, uh, ask questions and go back and forth, but I'm gonna try to keep everyone on task here, so we're not here, um, all night long. So with that, uh, I will open it to the public and let's see, um, who would like to speak first? Anyone from the public like to speak? Okay, make sure you're not muted.
Well, hi, this is Constance. Um, let me put my video on maybe. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, great.
And we can now see you.
Great.
Yes, and please give your name and address to start.
Oh, yes, so I'm Constance, living on, uh, 5 West Third. This is my husband, Alexi. Um, and we looked at the packet and, um, we wanted to mention that, uh, if the commission feels like they want to go forward with addressing this issue, um, we'd recommend keeping in mind, uh, that other cities or towns around Colorado and in the US do allow, uh, what's called backyard livestock, which is usually, um, smaller types of livestock and not, you know, we're not talking about cows or, uh, big animals, we're talking about smaller animals like, uh, some types, uh, like goats or some types of pigs. And, uh, that we'd, yeah, we looked especially at the city of Golden and Denver that allow, um, these animals and in, in lot sizes that are usually smaller than the typical lot size in Netherlands, uh, especially within the more, the denser parts of town, um, and that, um, yeah, these animals typically, typically don't need rotational grazing and do just fine on smaller parcels. Um, we would also recommend if you were looking for experts, uh, to weigh in on this issue with a subcommittee to maybe reach out to Abby and Adam from the Fit Store. Abby and Adam Pallas. They have an animal sanctuary and they have a fit store here and a, a, a dog cleaning business. Um, so they would, uh, probably be good people to weigh in, uh, who know the local context and also are used to caring for animals. Um, and yeah, and finally, one point we want, one last point we wanted to make is that it is currently, um, allowed to have some of these animals in town. We checked with, uh, yeah, Miranda and Cynthia can read on these, because a few months ago, we checked in with them about, uh, yeah, whether it was legal to have some types of livestock in town and they confirmed that it was. So, um, yeah, and that's about it for our comment, so thank you.
Uh, thank you, Constance, and as I said, if any questions come up later, this is a discussion item, we can come back to you. Appreciate that. Let's see, who wants to speak next?
Uh, Chair Williams, I just want to offer a reminder for anyone who's on the phone, if you want to speak, you may need to dial star six to unmute yourself.
Okay. Anyone want to speak next? We have a lot of people online, so I'm expecting.
Hi, this is Laura King. Um, I could speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead, Laura.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Laura King and I'm at 8 West 4th Street in Netherlands.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I was just wanting to mention that our code right now covers horses, llamas, and chickens, but it doesn't cover alpacas or pigs or cows. And so just, it, it sort of seems like, um, there's an internal inconsistency to it where, uh, why would we cover llamas with a certain set of rules and then just say you can do whatever you want with alpacas? I would like to see the code be a little bit more consistent for all livestock, um, because as it stands right now, because the, the way the code is being interpreted, um, basically what it's saying is unless you're talking about horses, llamas, or chickens, you can have any number of any animal on any size lot. And so, you know, I, I don't think that's gonna be, uh, consistent with the health and welfare of animals. Um, I would also just say that when you're looking at a situation where these lots can't support the animals at all, um, it is more like a, a feed lot than it is, you know, a sustainable farming practice. So those are my comments. Um, the other thing I would mention is that production animals are currently, um, only allowed under a special use review through the Planning Commission at this juncture, but the definition of production animal is unclear and so, um, unactionable by the town. So, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, Laura. Yeah, I think one of the, um, common themes that I read through all of the, uh, input that came in was the fact that there is inconsistency in our town code, which is probably why the Board of Trustees sent it back to us to look at. Uh, and it's, um, not just incomplete, but it's inconsistent, so, um, I just like to tell everyone here that, uh, this has been on our list. Uh, one of the jobs of the Planning Commission is to review the code that pertains to planning and to make any changes. And I know that, uh, this came up a number of years ago, that animal, uh, the animal ordinance was on our list, so, um, that's one of the reasons we're here. Roger, do you have a?
Yeah, I wanted, can I ask Amanda to please clarify my last statement? I guess I would be under the impression that horses, llamas, and chickens were allowed. So if it's not actually in the code for other animals, that they would not be allowed as a way. It's certainly, I thought, that it's been interpreted over the years. So which way does it go?
Yeah, so because it's not specifically spelled out, we're gonna turn to state statutes. So in state statutes, the way domestic animals are defined, it also includes livestock. You then flip to the definition of livestock and livestock would include animals like goats, um, pigs. I don't have the exact definition in front of me. Um, but that is why, because we don't have anything in code stating prohibiting those animals, we would default to state statute.
Which is that they are allowed. That they are allowed.
Right, so they are allowed, that certain types of livestock under the term, so you have the term of domestic animal, which includes livestock, and then you have the definition for livestock, and the definition for livestock would include some of these animals that we're talking about tonight, being like goats and pigs, um, and alpacas.
So if we want to regulate them, we need to get it in the code. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anyone else from the public like to jump in?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, who's this?
Hi, my name's Rachel Medoff and, um, I actually live just outside of the town limits off of Caribou Road, but I'm, I'm pretty close to town, so if there was ever a possibility of us getting annexed in, I would just be, like, to be involved in this because I actually do have my own livestock on my property. Um, and I, I don't know, I, I would just like to add that I, I see nothing wrong with the city wanting to have appropriate regulations in place, um, talking about kind of quantity and, and quality of care that may need to be provided to, you know, livestock. And I, when I say livestock, I don't mean like dogs and cats. I mean like, um, you know, chickens, alpacas, goats. Um, some people even have rabbits, things like that. I just think that, um, you know, as a, I would just like to say that as a mountain community, um, I think that, especially as a mountain town, being able to sustainably maintain animals is really important to a lot of people that live up here. Um, and I think a lot of people moved up here for that ability. I know that I was looking for a place where I could have the livestock that I use to, like, I, you know, I eat what my animals create. Um, and I think that the town should regulate it to a certain point, um, but that it shouldn't be banned. I think part of Netherlands charm and, and part of the, what makes it such a unique community is that people from all walks of life can come here and live the lifestyle that they wanted. And of course, you don't want to be living next to someone who's on a very small piece of property with 20 cows. However, I've never seen that up here and I don't think that's something that's really at risk. Um, I, I think maybe saying like, hey, maybe you need to have an acre to have a cow, because it has to go along with how much land you need to sustain quality of life. But I don't think saying, hey, no cows at all, because no one wants to see that would be appropriate for this town. I think it would take away from, from the quality of itself. That's just all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, anyone else like to put their thoughts in before we go back to the Planning Commission members for discussion?
Can I ask a question of Rachel?
Uh, yes, you may. Go ahead, Karen. And could you speak up a little bit? You seem, it's hard to hear you.
Ra- Rachel, what kind of animals do you have?
So currently, I just keep, I actually have 20 chickens and then I have two, I have a pair of breeding rabbits. Um, those are the only currently livestock that I have. I want to eventually get goats and possibly alpacas, um, but obviously all things in due time.
And can I ask you how large your property is?
Yeah, so my property is just under two acres. However, um, most of it is really steep terrain. So I would say my flat property is about maybe point four of an acre. Um, and that includes the plot that my house is sitting on. So it's actually, it's pretty small. Um, so my chickens don't free range, they live in their own little enclosed space and it's like right next to, actually, it's right across the street from where my neighbors live and they look at it, and I've obviously talked to them about my chickens and they, they actually really enjoy them, but, um, yeah, I live on a, well, it's very steep, so it's mostly just the very front of my property.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Rachel, this is Steve. Um, question, what kind of, uh, prevention or structures do you have to prevent predators from coming in? Um, you, you mentioned they're not free-range chickens.
Yeah.
But what, what kind of, um, deterrent do you have for predators?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So my chickens don't free range. If I had like a livestock guardian dog, they could, because those pretty much keep everything away. They're really impressive at it, but I just don't have the ability to do that. But I do have, um, a, kind of like a shed enclosure that they can go into at night. And then I have kind of like a fenced in, almost like a dog run that my rabbits and chickens go into. And then in the summer, like the late spring, summer into fall, I have electric fencing that goes around my coop, because the only thing that could really get into it is a bear. Um, and electric fencing, um, keeps bears away. They can actually sense it with their noses. And so if you have just like, uh, just like one or two strands of electric fencing, um, they pretty much stay away.
But you, you've not had any issues with predators, then I take it?
No, so I, I've had my chickens up here for two and a half years now. And one time, in the very beginning, when I didn't have my coop that I have now, it was very small, the bear stole a grain bucket. Um, he actually broke it, but that was a very old coop, so it kind of fell apart. And then I have the bobcat come and look at my chickens. He'll like come and, because I live, I back up to National Forest, like I'm, like I said, I'm on a very steep hill. He's looked at them, but he can't, I've never lost anything and I've never had anything get into my coop. And I really don't have a high predator. We actually, I have a, a game trail camera on my coop to see the predators that come by. And the most predators that ever come by are just like, you know, the town has coyotes. Those come by occasionally, um, but they don't really do anything. I don't, I, besides that, I really have actually, surprisingly, a low predator interaction where I live.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, anyone else want to speak? From the public?
This is May Gerald.
Hey, May.
Hi. Is it okay to make a comment?
You may.
Thank you. Um, I did send a, a letter in, um, and I had thought about a couple other points, or one other point. I saw that there was, besides what I put in my letter, nothing about that dogs should be kept in the house at night. And I, I was really thinking about that, because back in the eighties, when my kids were going to Netherlands Elementary School, we talked a lot about diversity. And I think the fact is that if we have a diverse population, we're gonna have diverse approaches to animals. I mean, my neighbor, bless her heart, she has a baby carriage for a rabbit, or did. And people express themselves with their animals and interact with them in very different ways, so I think that as long as, as the animals are secure for the night, it should be up to the owner if they want their dog in their chicken coop or guarding their goats in the barn or whatever. I think that, um, we should depend on people to have the right breed of dog for that. I think we can over-regulate sometimes. I did want to, um, emphasize, well, I said, I just said I thought it was good not to have electric fencing. And, um, I've seen a lot of electric fences and unfortunately, sometimes they kill birds. And that's why I feel like the electric fences are, are not a good thing. I do understand that, that sometimes animals won't respect anything else. And that for anyone who, um, may not have read my letter or don't know who I am, I do have two horses in town. They're the only ones left. And I've, um, mentioned a few things about the definition of what a horse is. And, um, also the kind of detail of, with the half acre requirement per unit, as they call them in Boulder County, they allow for, um, hor- horse pastures to be off-site as long as it's accessible. So that's the case for me. I have two now. And I do have a over half an acre where I live. But of course, the house is on part of it and part of it's on hillside, so I have a pasture for them. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have about my situation or, and I'd like to hear comments or feedback from the Planning Commission on my suggestions for, um, substituting a more, you know, including donkeys and burrows into the horse definition. horse definition. I think it's appropriate to leave llama in there and even alpaca for larger livestock. I did notice on the Boulder County guidelines that they count five miniature horses as one horse unit. So if you're talking about backyard livestock, um, miniature horses could conceivably fall into that category, I suppose. My horse, my pony is not a mini, she's an actual pony. So thanks for the opportunity, Steve.
Yeah, thanks, May. Um, and as we go around, uh, to the planning commission, uh, members here shortly for comments and so forth, um, they may have some questions or comments for you. Uh, okay, anyone else from the public that wishes to speak?
Yeah, hi, Steve, this is Mickey Osterloo. Let me see if I can start my video.
Okay.
Ninety-seven East Third Street. Uh, first of all, thank you for serving on the planning commission, all of you. I know it's sometimes a thankful, thankless job. Um, so I think I made most of my points clear in my letter, uh, my concerns and where I would take this. I will say, you know, re- reiterate that when we worked on chickens, so I found the planning commission, uh, I don't know, six years ago now, whenever we passed the chicken ordinance, um, that that was, that the definition, the way the town code was written, right, that didn't allow for anything else except for chickens, llamas and horses, uh, which were already in the code. So I just feel a frustration that it was a done deal at that time and now a re, um, having to rehash it. So, uh, I wish you all the best and good luck in trying to rehash this. Um, the one thing I did not mention in my letter, uh, that I think should be up for consideration, especially for large livestock, um, when permitting, is, um, because it's not yet in fire season. Well, I guess it's always in fire season at this point, um, where we live, but, uh, a plan for evacuation, uh, for large livestock, so demonstrating, you know, trailers and, you know, things in place that, uh, would be important because we live in an area that obviously wildfire is a very real, uh, possibility. So I think everything else is, I pretty clearly laid out in my letter, um, and I'm happy to take any questions that anyone has, but yeah, thank you so much for serving.
Thank you, Mickey. Um, we appreciate you serving it, uh, when you did. Um, anyone have any questions for Mickey or, uh, wants to speak? On their situation? Anyone else?
Actually, I do have a follow-up question to that. Hey, Mickey, um, one of my question was just, I was not, I don't recall being around. Maybe I was, when the original ordinance was passed. Does anyone have a little bit of history on that, when, when that was passed? It sounds like the intent was that it would only cover the animals that were listed in the code, but that the way in which we've implemented it per the law is that we default to state. Is that, is that correct?
So the way, as I remember it, and Stephen, uh, you were on and, um, uh, yeah, I can't remember who, Roger, Roger was probably still on the planning commission at that point. Yeah, I mean, the town, the lawyer, you know, it was, the way it was written was that not, unless it's a pet, right, it's not, the way I remember it, and we'd have to go back and search the, the notes, I'm sure, uh, was that no other, you know, livestock would be allowed except for, you know, chickens under this new ordinance and, uh, what had previously been developed and allowed for was llamas and horses since there were horses in town. Um, at the time, there was just really no discussion on anything else being allowed. So the way it's being interpreted now, which might be the correct way, um, I'm not a lawyer, but, um, it's definitely at odds with what was established in my memory, you know, whenever that was, six years ago.
Yeah, that, that's right. Um, that was my recollection as well, Mickey, and, and the fact that, that's when I sort of, well, I think Roger put it on the list at that time of, uh, ordinance that we need to go back and talk about other animals. Um, but, uh, when was it, do you remember, Roger, when the horses and, and, um, llamas and, when, when did these other animals get included?
Yeah, it would be wrong to actually say. Definitely was a while ago, so it was six or plus years. I think horses and llamas were actually before the chickens. But I don't know, in some ways it doesn't really matter. Uh, but yes, the, I think the impression was that it was to allow those animals and no other animals were allowed, but it doesn't really matter. Now we're here to clarify.
To try to fix this.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, anyone else from the public wish to make some comments? If not, we'll, um, go around the room with the planning commission members. I'd like to get some thoughts on, uh, the questions before us that Miranda put into the aim about, um, how we should proceed, uh, and also, uh, some, you know, some comments on whether we should proceed with a, um, with a subcommittee. Can you hear me? I'm sorry, who's this?
Uh, this is Miles Le Hugh.
Oh, yes, Miles.
Um, I have property, uh, West Forty-five Third Street, West Third Street. Um, we, uh, I, I haven't been as plugged in as I, as I wanted to be and have just learned about this meeting just yesterday. So I did want to ask the question, why is this discussion limited just to the welfare of the animals? Um, I, I don't understand it. For example, if there's a buffalo, obviously there's gonna be welfare of the people outside the fence and there's gotta be obvious fence, um, you know, strength requirements. Um, I, 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 I also, you know, I also want to understand, I mean, we think of a, a few goats or a few, you know, bunny rabbits, um, and it seems it's really nice and there's, you know, there's vines and there's, you know, it's a beautiful thing. But when it's, when the way to keep these animals in is, um, uh, ragtag, um, completely sort of look like it was done in fifteen minutes. Um, what I'm trying to say is that there should definitely in this discussion and hopefully in the subcommittee, um, you know, attention to what is keeping the, you know, the, the smell and the noise and the waste, byproduct, whatever it might be, from affecting the neighbors. And, um, you know, I, I know that you guys have all read the, the letters, um, but it seems like the big elephant in the room is to me like, how much is too much? And I really feel like it seemed to me a true no-brainer to allow a subcommittee to sort of delve into this, um, definitions and rules, uh, as a, as a starting point. It seems very simple to me. I guess that's all I had. And it'd be nice if someone could answer my question, why this, why this discussion is limited just to welfare of the animals.
Chair Williams, this is Miranda. Can I respond to Miles? I think there's just some clarification too on that.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Miranda.
Great. So, uh, for the planning commission, the board of trustees, so the planning commission will only focus on zoning. Um, so the planning, so zoning, any sort of zoning limitations related to animal houses or space limits, whatever that may look like. Um, and the board of trustees requested that if there were to be any zoning limitations, that would be done with the animal health and welfare in mind. I think what you're speaking to, Miles, is what is in chapter seven of the municipal code, which are things related to noise and nuisances and animals. That is not the purview of the planning commission. In which case, the board of trustees, after, they want to start with this discussion. If this, and when this moves back to the board of trustees, they will need to then amend chapter seven, which looks at some of those concerns that you've noted.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask Miles a clarifying question? This is Rachel.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay, just, just out of curiosity, on when you're talking about the fencing that, you know, is used to, let's say, keep in your, let's say you got two goats, right? Are you saying that you want there, you would like there to be some sort of fencing regulation, something close to an HOA essentially, where you're like, you have to build a fence that looks like X, Y and Z to maintain livestock? Is that what you were envisioning?
No, not at all. I would never, ever use that evil word HOA around here. Um, no, uh, the, the fence should be strong enough and capable enough to keep the livestock in. And my example was, was a buffalo and, uh,
So you're just concerned about the integrity of the fencing, not, not how it necessarily looks, but the actual like safety and ability to maintain the animal inside?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Chair Williams, it's Miranda again. Can I just offer one more point of clarification for the planning commission?
Yes, please go ahead.
We're talking, yeah, thanks, when we're talking zoning limitations, I think I just, another point of clarification is just ultimately, the planning commission wants to move forward with this. If you'd be looking at it kind of, of course, from a land issue standpoint and how animals, livestock impact neighbors, and then if there should be subsequent limitations on, say, how many animals or what type of animal you have per square footage, just one, just one example of how that could be calculated. Um, you know, again, the board of trustees just didn't want just some random arbitrary number. I will tell you, they did not like the keeping animals in Boulder County calculation where animals are looked at as units. But would rather maybe turn to the New Hampshire document or the Rutgers document where it talks about, you know, for their health and well-being, it's recommended you have so many square footage for this type of animal. Um, so that's just kind of a clarification, but that would be obviously what the planning commission would be looking at should you want to continue forward.
Yes, and actually I was gonna mention that too because that, and it does feed into the, um, uh, animal health and safety as well. I mean, it's all kind of wrapped together. So, you know, that, that certainly does make sense. Um, let's see, anyone else from the public have any comments?
Well, this is May Gerald, the horse owner. If I may, I'd like to speak to the fencing. I think that sometimes people wonder about my corral because it's made so if my horses need to get out, they can. If, uh, a moose gets in there, which has happened, we've had a wolf dog that was responsible for the death of my other horse. Um, they have never gotten out of the corral that they're in. Um, unless they knock the rails down, but that, usually they do that and if they can get them down, they go up right away. And just maintaining the posts in the ground and so forth is a job in itself and it may, I don't know if you're referring to my corral, but people have asked me sometimes, can't they get out? And I say, yeah, they can if they really need to. So it's something people don't think about a lot, but if a tree were to fall down or something like that, they really have to, they could get out. But they don't get out because they don't have to get out and they have what they need.
Right, okay.
People might not think about. Um, I think with small livestock, you have to really protect them more, but putting up a chain link fence with a roof over it for the corral would be hard. Or, um, and even so, locking them into a space and then in the event that a tree would fall or something. So it's a consideration I think a lot of people have never thought of, but most people can kind of appreciate where I'm coming from, whether they agree or not, I'm not sure. But I did want to interject that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, anyone else in the public want to say anything to add to the discussion? Okay, if not, I'm gonna turn it over to members of the planning commission to have their comments, as I said, about the questions before the committee, uh, commission and, um, some comments about how we should proceed. So why don't we, we'll go around the room. Um, we'll just start with, uh, randomly with Karen. Karen, would you like to start us off?
Um, sure, and let me know if my voice is too soft.
No, you are sounding much better.
Okay, great. So I do have experience with livestock. I had chickens when I lived in Boulder. And I was really fortunate to be able to let them free range during the day on about a quarter acre of very lush grass. Um, and, uh, growing up, we had pigs, but we had four acres there and I had a good friend with a sheep farm who had several acres of pasture on a, along a river. Um, I've looked at all of the material in the packet, plus I've looked at the, um, animal code for lions, Boulder County, Denver, Golden and the city of Boulder. Um, I, I think we need to be proactive on developing regulations for all animals, which, uh, could possibly, um, live here in the mountains. Rather than being reactive when a resident has a new type of animal. Um, if we create regulations at that time, it could appear to be unfair and even punitive. Um, first looking at the material, I, I was in favor of the, um, proposed approach of having a minimum of a half acre for all livestock except chickens. And, um, that's based on my experience with, with, uh, animals. And also it's consistent with the Boulder County and the city, city of Boulder regulations. Boulder requires a half acre for goats. Um, but I also think there, that we would want to, um, uh, uh, as an option or maybe in addition to those conditions, we would have a specification of the amount of, uh, the yard area for the animal, the range, um, for, uh, ranging and, uh, um, for the fielding them. Um, so I, I think that the, the proposed, um, approach, um, addresses both the animal's well-being and also the impact on neighbors as far as noise and odor is concerned. So having a larger lot, your, your animals are less likely to negatively impact your neighbors. Um, uh, let's see what else. Uh, I would add bees, pigs and ducks to the list of animals that are in, um, the proposal. And, uh, we might also want to, um, put together a suggested care practices and local resources for, um, animals. Um, this is something that Denver has and it covers things like, um, uh, suggesting a heat lamp for chickens when the temperature goes below twenty degrees. Uh, I did have heat lamps for my chickens in Boulder when it got cold. Um, a companion for goats. Goats do much better if they have another goat as a companion. Dogs needing human companionship. Um, maybe, maybe that's the place where we cover minimum outdoor area for the different types of livestock. And this document could also include resources like both online and books. Um, I think a renewable license would be good. And you could provide the resources and best practice document at that time. Um, we might also want a contract with Boulder County Animal Control We might also want a contract with Boulder County Animal Control to provide services to Netherland like Lyons and Jamestown does. I'd also like to see animal welfare in the comprehensive plan. Currently, we don't have anything about animal welfare. And I think community and expert input is important, and so maybe we want to modify the timeline to include a way to gather more community and expert input. And that's all I have. Oh, I do have a question for Jennifer, Miranda, or Laura King, and that is about the SRU for production animals. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? What is a production animal? What sort of SRU is required?
Yeah, so in the current use group table, it discusses production of animals, but I think it gets a little complicated in that that production is not well-defined in what production necessarily means. And so I think in going through interpretation is that the production or breeding of animals for sale, it's a little bit ambiguous. And so I think as a part of this discussion, we'd be looking for further clarification. We have not had this come before us. I don't know, Attorney Madson, if you have more to add, but that is one of the challenges of town staff is how do we, the definition behind production.
Is that like a milk-producing animal? Is that?
I think the way in which I was interpreting it is that is the breeding of animals for profit, but Attorney Madson, again, I haven't had to deal with an SRU application about this, so I haven't really delved too far into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Karen. If you think of anything else, we can, you know, obviously, jump in. Let's see, let's go to Chris Paray, do you have any comments?
I was just going to speak. Hello, everybody. I think what we should do is put a committee together and dig up all of the stuff from six or seven years ago, we did the chicken stuff, and make it that there is just certain set parameters that need to be for each animal as it is in other parts of the state. And just combining everybody's stuff, don't make this be a six-month expedition, but something that could be using what we have in hand, grabbing some things from Denver, grabbing some things from Boulder County, Lyons, et cetera, and putting it back together and rewriting it, and putting it through the attorney to make sure everything's okay, and moving forward. And bring it to the board.
Yep, and I think that's nicely spelled out in the timetable there as well.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Let's go, Jim Reese?
Thank you. First off, I wanted to say thank you to the public, those that submitted letters and emails, that was very thoughtful feedback, some very detailed information. Really wasn't something I thought about, and it's good to get the perspectives out there. I also agree with Karen's idea that whatever happens, I agree that, one, the questions before the board, yes, this is an important issue, we should address it. And I like the idea of a subcommittee, and I like the fact that Karen was saying we should probably look for wider community feedback. There was a possibility, one of the people that emailed in suggested a community survey so that we're not just getting the people that are aware of this issue. Maybe we could get a much wider cross-section of opinions, like we did on the parking study that we'll address later, tonight. So I think that would be good. I really thought it was interesting, the idea, we were talking about a little earlier, Steve, of an SRU process so that this could be an individualized, we might have to clean up the code a little bit, but I would love to see this be some kind of an individualized look at each case-by-case basis, because everybody's lot, you know, we have all these non-conforming lots, and Netherland is a little different, everybody's setbacks are a little different, a buffalo is a lot different than a small goat, you know? So if there was a way, you know, that this could be, you know, whatever it ends up being, the recommendation of the subcommittee, I like the idea of it not just being a blanket process that you apply for a permit, but something that, you know, if you're going to have, you know, 16 goats in your lot, or whatever is allowed, and ducks and chickens, you know, it would be great for the neighbors and the people of the neighborhood to be able to come and provide feedback directly. And that SRU process really provides an opportunity, several opportunities between the planning commission and the BOT for public comment and input. So ultimately, I think this is something that's a worthy topic, and people are saying, you know, why hasn't this been addressed before now? I just don't think it probably was much of an issue. So now we're taking it up and we're going to address it because it's become something that the public is concerned with. So I like the idea of the subcommittee. And Miranda, would you do me a favor, just so that anybody who's watching, could you pan down just a little bit and show that timeline for, the proposed timeline for, oh, it's split between two. So basically, what it looked like to me was, there would be a final presentation of a recommendation for ordinance changes to the BOT on July 5th. So we're only talking about a couple months down the road, as long as the subcommittee is able to get together and do their work, but there's lots of information. I think that everything that the staff put together, including some of the proposed changes in definitions and code, it really set the committee up for success, and we should be able to meet that timeline. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Yeah, you brought up a good point, I think, about the fact that all of the situations are different. We have different, you know, amount of land in different zoning districts, we have different densities, you know, with different kinds of animals and so forth. So, you know, one, you know, ordinance doesn't sort of fit all. We could have maybe some general guidelines, but then if you go through with a process, the neighbors have some say, as well as the, you know, owner can propose, you know, how they're going to do this, which would address a lot of the concerns that we've heard tonight as well. So, but we can come back to that later. Let's move on to Stephanie. Stephanie, you got some thoughts on animals, ordinance?
Animals in general, yes. No, I was going to, one question I did have was, I was just a question for town staff, which is, is the animal issue something that town staff is frequently getting dinged or pinged about? Sort of, I kind of get a sense of the scale of the conversation. Is this something that a recent incident has simply flared up a lot of interest, or has this been a longstanding kind of issue where we've had town staff have had to engage?
I would say over the last year, we've had to default to state statutes quite a bit in terms of people's requests for livestock. And Cynthia, if you want to maybe speak to historical, it's my understanding, it really hasn't been much of an issue, but I think over the last six months, I've probably fielded five or six questions specifically about can I have livestock on my property? And again, because of the way we've interpreted this with legal, we go back to that defaulting, and the answer is yes. So I think, you know, there are certain circumstances or situations where a house does have these animals that may start that conversation, but more and more people are coming forward wanting to have goats or pigs or other type livestock.
This is Cynthia. So just historically, I wouldn't say we've had a heck of a lot of requests. More recently, I've been asked about pigs and yaks in the last year, and goats. So I think we're getting a lot more requests than I would say I saw historically. If anything, what I got more in the past was complaints about barking dogs and sometimes chickens, but there weren't a lot of inquiries about keeping them so much.
Just to jump in on that, and I agree, so I think, Stephanie, one of our biggest challenges is just that, that we're defaulting back to state statute, which is not providing maybe some of that guidance the way llamas, horses, and chickens do. And so we're kind of stuck in a yes, you can, and whether there needs to be or not, again, it's a debate, but then there are no additional regulations or even a necessary permanent process to have these animals. If that's a desire of the town, or it was a desire of the town back when those ordinances were first put into place about those certain animal types, we aren't able to then enforce that for these other types of livestock.
Thanks, that's helpful context to hear about the number of inquiries you're getting. And in terms, so that relates to the number of inquiries you've been getting about livestock. Do you have any context for how many complaints you've also received from neighbors about other people's livestock?
I would say probably the same amount of complaints within the last maybe six months as we have inquiries. It's really a handful, but the momentum is gaining, you know, especially as more people are coming forward seeking or bringing in these livestock. Neighbors usually come forward confused that this was allowed. And then some concerns, as noted earlier, just in relation to standards of care, noise, waste management plans. Like chicken, for a chicken permit, for example, you're required to have a waste management plan, but that, of course, does not happen with, again, other livestock. So there is this kind of a concern that people may not be mindful of those nuisances or things that would fall into Chapter 7 because it's not regulated.
Thanks, that's really helpful, I appreciate that. And then my other question, actually, since speaking of the dog barking issue, is that, the nuisance part of this, you mentioned, is covered under Chapter 7.
Yep.
In terms of the code, I don't have it up in front of me, but I assume that we also regulate the number of dogs or cats someone is allowed to have? Is that true, or is that unregulated?
Yeah, and I don't actually, because I'm sharing the screen, I can't look up code either, and I don't want to speak offhand, and so I don't know if Cynthia or Attorney Madson can weigh in with code in front of them, but. I don't know, Attorney Madson's coming up with you, but I don't, we can't use.
I'll just give the context for my question while you're looking that up, which is just that, you know, while I appreciate that livestock are sort of a different species, a lot of the issues that we've been discussing, and if we've read about in the letters, are also issues that come with other more traditional household pets that we wouldn't consider livestock. And so for consistency, if we do stand up a smaller group, I would just suggest that we look at whether or not we do regulate other kind of household pets that can come with the same level, you know, both for like, you know, safety issues, which were discussed. True, there's probably more dog bites in town than there are goat bites. So I think that just making sure that we're consistent across how we handle livestock with other traditional kind of household pets that people would also be keeping on their property. But in general, I would say that, you know, especially giving your feedback, which was extremely helpful for me to see here that there is an increase in the interest and demand around this. I do think that it's important to set some rules in place that are consistent and aligned with what our community wants versus redefaulting to state statute, which may or may not be aligned with where our particular community is at, so. That's it, thanks.
Stephanie, I think it's important too to be proactive rather than reactive, you know? And I seem to recall when we did the chicken ordinance, that came about because it was a big interest in people wanting to be sustainable in having eggs and even meat. And so, you know, we reacted to that, but I think in the process, we sort of didn't think wide enough about other animals and, you know, the impacts accordingly. So, yeah, I agree with you, I think we do need to be proactive here.
Yeah, and I would just say, one of the things I do definitely agree with is one of Chris's comments about making sure we do this in a somewhat timely fashion, looking at not only the codes that were sent to us, which were very helpful, looking at Golden, Denver, just doing some general Googling to see what other towns and communities, you know, kind of across the country from Asheville, other places do with this. We're not the first community to clearly have to write these regulations, different places handle it differently for sure, but we're not reinventing the wheel here. So I would hope that we could, if we did send up a subcommittee, that it would be able to progress in a somewhat timely fashion.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're unique in some ways because of our location and the size of the town and the predators and so forth, but, yeah, still, I think we really need to focus or to take an ordinance that really applies to us rather than a state statute.
So Stephanie, Attorney Madson's having issues with her microphone, but we do have the information that per Section 7102, it is unlawful to own or harbor more than three of any one species or no more than five of any combination of species. It's, yeah.
Interesting, so would that actually apply to lots, and that's a general, I mean, it's a species, so that really applies to everything across the board. You can't have like two dogs and four chickens, because that would be more than five of any particular species?
Yeah, so I think where, so the way in which pet animals defined is dog, cat, bird, rabbit, guinea pig, hamster, mouse, snake, iguana, turtle, chicken, hen, or other species of domestic animal. And it's from that final piece there, the other domestic animal that we default then to domestic animal code definition and state statute, which then outlines livestock. But yes, that would under that realm, but then this is, I think there's a little bit of confusing, because that section, what I just read you, falls under the section of code that is titled, oh, sorry, I got to get back to it. It's titled Commercial and Non-Commercial Kennel Licenses. So again, if the plan is to really tackle this, we've got to kind of bring together different components.
Yeah.
Because this is specific to kennels. Yeah.
I guess, yes, I guess whatever subcommittee. Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I was just going to say, then like further in that section, it's talking specifically about dogs. Like any person who owns or harbors more than one animal for commercial purposes for breeding or sale, or who owns and harbors more than seven dogs, must make an application for the Board of Trustees for a commercial kennel license. And so then you go back to kind of the definition of kennel, I think, long story short, definitions go a long way, especially as we look to clean this up, because we don't have all those definitions in the code.
Yeah, I might hate to open a Pandora's box, but I guess, I was just asking to make sure whatever we develop for livestock is somehow consistent or reasonable with whatever, you know, home pet code we have. But it sounds like they might, the way the code is written now, that's definitely a flag for the subcommittee, they should probably go in and make sure that all the language for the various animal types and species are aligned appropriately, and there's no conflicts in the code. I think that might, that would be one of the charges then to the subcommittee.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Stephanie. Anything else?
Hi, this is Linda.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, listening to all the comments, it's very apparent that there are a lot of questions on the ordinance. And I know the planning commission is trying to provide not only a short-term but long-range planning on recommendations to the board. We're trying to promote harmonious development, not only for the animals, but also the residents of the town. And I think we need to emphasize this is really important on both sides. The language of the ordinance, excuse me, is what is presented for us to review and solidify, and it benefits the town, it benefits the town staff, code enforcement, law enforcement, and it also protects the welfare and quality of life, not only for the residents, but the animals. I think it's really important to stick to facts on this, and the conversations we're having right now are very beneficial, but I think a subcommittee can look... having right now are very beneficial, but I think a subcommittee can look into things because there's so many issues that are not completely clear, there are a lot of questions coming up. I agree with what some of the other commissions said about renewable license, I think if there are issues, things need to be, there needs to be a correct way to bring that to the attention. So I just, I'm hoping this moves forward with the subcommittee, and then we move in a positive way that works to strive good outcome for not only the residents, the town staff, and the animals. I think that's about all, thank you.
Okay, thanks, thanks Linda. Let's see, Roger.
It's left.
Well, Roger and I.
Yes, this is actually very timely, I think actually, as my first question early on, I think in as Mickey spoke, that I think that a lot of people are in the impression that unless we had it in our code, you know, pigs and other animals were not allowed, so I would say that this is actually very timely and very important to move forward quickly so we don't get ourselves in a bind. So my comment said on that the idea that this is actually zoning, it is a fine line between chapter sixteen and chapter six and chapter seven, so we certainly have gone over, given some feedback, so I would encourage everybody, number one, I encourage the idea of the subcommittee, having two plan commissioners on it would be fantastic, and that we actually ought to, everybody should write down their comments and get it to that subcommittee, that would be the best thing going forward. I endorse and thank everybody's comments in the Plan Commission, Karen, starting out, everything you said is, is I, I agree with it, but every commissioner has spoken of, I agree with, and we need to mark that down as, you know, moving forward. Some of the things that I saw, my number one, my initial thought, now don't take this wrong, is that, you know, I know around town and historically, as we had this discussion about, might even come up with the chickens and the other animals, six years ago, that there are a lot of people said, well, if you want to actually raise animals and do that, then you know, you should move to unincorporated Boulder County, you know, and it's not, a lot of people feel that this is a neighborhood community and a, you know, very high density residential, and, and it's a fine line between being appropriate in HDR and MDR. So that being said, the, as far as our zoning one, which I guess is really the question at the RASAN is, I think the half acre rule is a very good rule and a very good standard to have the, you know, the livestock, especially not household pets, but livestock, the minimum of half acre is actually a good standard to start with, but that would be up to the subcommittee moving forward. Which, the, one other issue I'd say that's not necessarily our purview is that the impact on their neighbors, as this committee goes forward, is actually a huge part, it's not just the health and safety in animals, but the, you know, the zoning part, but the impact on the neighborhood is huge. If anybody's actually lived around a donkey, listened to a donkey every night or in the morning, it's the exact same reason why when we had the chicken rule, that we, no roosters. The comments for the committee too, that actually, when you read about the chicken ordinance, there actually is not a limit or a number for the chickens. So reviewing of all those things would be very important, and there should be numbers and quantities for every type of animal. I hope that the committee, I know this example, which was Boulder, Boulder County, which is actually very thorough, and I thought was actually a good example, I would hope that the committee would look at, or the town, whoever reviews this more, I think we should look at Boulder, Lewisville, Lafayette, to see how our like communities are approaching this. I did click on the Golden website, and actually, I didn't go look at their whole rules, but it was very limited in the number of animals that they were actually covering, but I just saw that very quickly, but I don't think we should be, need to look for San Francisco and Portland, Oregon, Boulder, Lewisville, Lafayette, Longmont would be good examples of what other communities are doing with livestock. See if there's anything else. Steve brought up, or Jim brought up the SRU, I think that's an option, but I know that there's been an awful lot of feedback and pushback in SRU, so the one way to enforce this, which is actually in that code, is that animal officer, I think Karen mentioned, powering Boulder County, so if we go forward on this, it actually is gonna be, you know, a pretty large task, it's like, I heard another police officer really, I think. So short of an SRU, the only other way I could see doing it would be where you had very specific rules and guidelines, and that officer, you know, would show up through the permitting, or someone on staff, or officer, has to go through a very strong permitting process, examine the property, look at the detail, so in some ways would be an SRU, but maybe not the SRU hearing, but Steve's idea about giving neighbors a chance to give feedback, I think that's, that certainly should be in the conversation, so I think that's what I have. All our comments have been very, very point right on, and I think the subcommittee moving forward, it would be fantastic. My only sorrow is that I'm actually out of town for the next five weeks, so I would love to volunteer for that committee, but I don't think would be inappropriate because I'm actually on the run so much here, so. Good luck though, but that's what we need to do, thanks.
Okay, thank you Roger. Yeah, and I'll just finish up here before we go back to any further input that people may have come up with. Yeah, when I sat down and I went through all of the input, went through some of the sample ordinances that we've seen from other towns and areas, I started making up a list, and that's when I came up with this kind of a quasi SRU idea, where we have a list of things like lot size, odor, noise, waste, you know, a lot of things that come up in our SRU process, so if there, there was a way to, to kind of go through this process that might be a little bit more customized to a particular situation, rather than a blanket rule or ordinance that may or may not work for all animals or all, all situations, zoning, zoning areas and so forth, so I think maybe that's something the subcommittee might look at as one way to, you know, to add in, into the ordinance, I think we should start certainly with all the work that we did with the chicken ordinance, that might be a good place to start and see how that fits for, for other animals as well. I do think we need to cover, like I said before, all animals, and not just rely on the state statutes that may, may not fit us up here in Netherlands. So I'd like to go, I'd like to see this subcommittee go ahead, I think two, two commissioners, two planning commissioners should be on it, I also would like to see a member of the SAB on it as well, although I think what Billy said, he was gonna be on it, and he's, isn't he part of the, no, he's not the SAB, he's on the.
He's not a part of the SAB, and I, and so, I would do the, a public noticing, which is, which is absolutely fine, I mean, I can see if there's anyone from the sub, staff who wants to be on it, just a reminder, Commissioner Giblin, yeah, he is interested in serving, so maybe one more commissioner, and then we can reach out to SAB.
Okay, I think SAB should be on there, I like the idea of having an expert on there, if that's at all possible, or maybe we could bring in an expert later, Constance brought up, gave some names, we could, we could look at, you know, other experts as well, but I think that's really important because there's, there may be a lot of subtle issues here that we don't, you know, fully have knowledge on or understand or even appreciate. And, and then I think there should be at least, what, one, one or two town employees on this, and do you think it's, you think we should have a Board of Trustee member on, or not, Miranda?
I don't think so, because it will come to them, but maybe I'll defer to trustee Taylor, my feeling is this will come before them a few times.
Right.
Do you think there should be a board? Are you having microphone issues? I can ask trustee Taylor. I think trustee Taylor might be having microphone issues.
Okay, oh, there he is.
Now, do you want to be mindful of size, you know, I think one of the challenges with the marijuana ordinance review is it just ended up getting so big, but it was hard to work through, so just, my recommendation is maybe we don't have a Board of Trustees, just because right now you're looking at seven people, seventeen people.
Okay, I think Julian is having.
What'd you say? A fleshy guy up here.
So Miranda, also, the subcommittee would have meetings where the public would be invited as well, because it would be a public meeting, correct?
Would need to, with all the people listed, it would need to be a public meeting. We'd likely structure it though, in a way where public comment is given at the beginning, and the public were not necessarily, I want to be mindful of the flow of the process, so similar to a board meeting, we'd handle it like a work session where the public would be invited to participate if and where needed.
Okay, all right, yeah, I think that, that certainly makes sense, and it's worked well with other subcommittees, like you pointed out in the past, so you're thinking, how many members total?
So if you have two commissioners, SAB, an expert, and town staff, and I view town staff as myself, and Dan likely as a police officer, since they've been involved in this, then you're looking at, that's six, Board of Trustees would make seven, oh, excuse me, that's seven, Board of Trustees would make eight.
Okay, so S, you got SAD on there too, right?
Yeah, and then I'm thinking kind of Abby or Adam, you know, I did speak with Boulder County Animal Control, and they said this is really outside their purview, they would not be interested in participating in this, because they do solely enforcement, and the representatives that we work with are not involved with developing those guidelines, nor are they interested in serving in that capacity.
Okay.
Hey, Steve?
Yes, yes, Jim.
Hey, can I have whoever's running the slides, push that down to where we see the rest of the timeline and the questions before the board? Perfect, right there, thank you. So I did want to, oh, we lost it, say that it looked like the town staff was recommending a smaller group, try and avoid, because you saw, we lost it there, but it looked like there was possibly as many as five or six meetings that were gonna have to take place, and every time you get more than two commissioners and a staff member, which is what she was recommending here, it has to be publicly noticed, and since we're gonna discuss this at the Planning Commission meeting, you know, I'm guessing that this is gonna come up, that might be the opportunity to have larger discussion with the bigger group, but I, I just wanted to double check with Miranda, as I was reading, it looked like you were recommending trying to keep it a little smaller so that it could be kind of fleet and get through the process quicker, and if we got bogged down with experts and big amounts of people, you know, scheduling is always an issue, as we found out during that subcommittee, so I'll, I'll just end it there, turn it over to Miranda and see what your opinion is.
That is absolutely my opinion, I think, you know, and the many a subcommittee we've been on, it's tough, and, and, you know, we definitely want to avoid that public component, I think like Commissioner Blake Ford talks about, maybe there's a survey or something, but subcommittees that are smaller move faster, and I know that the goal is not to expedite this, but it allows us to work together more, because we're not trying to coordinate eight people's schedules, I'm only looking at coordinating maybe four, because it's too fast, I'm looking at two commissioners. Happy to take the recommendation of more, but I do think it can challenge the process, like subcommittee, the subdivision is a perfect example, where it was Commissioner Plakemore and Commissioner Cornell with town attorney, myself, and Cynthia, and that seemed to move along pretty well.
Yeah, that's a good point, and there's probably no reason why they could have a smaller subcommittee, but then they present their, their draft to an expert, or present it to the police, for example, and, you know, get their feedback during the process, that way it will speed it up a bit more, and we're still getting their input, does that make any sense?
Yeah, so I mean, we could also add in a presentation to SAB here, I mean, SAB meets the day after you do, and so it could go, excuse me, you could go to the Planning Commission on, say, May 25th, and the whole Sustainability Advisors Board on May 26th. We could run this through the normal NPPT process with those who may be impacted, and adjust the timeline a little bit, as Commissioner Blake Ford had suggested, we absolutely could discuss that, I would recommend we discuss the timeline as a subcommittee during that kickoff meeting, and then maybe we do start with Billy and one other person.
Okay.
Can I suggest an expert?
Ah, please.
A Boulder County Humane Society?
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Miranda, can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
We can now.
Okay, I'm calling in, so I'm the additional phone number there, WebEx does not work with my Linux system. May I speak for a moment about this?
Yes, you may.
Okay, so I, I'm agreeing with Roger that this is a large task, and I was wisely reminded by Attorney Madsen a few days ago about the importance of taking care regarding how much you bite off, so you know you can finish the job. And we certainly modified our ordinances, improved our ordinances over the last two years, the BOT with the help of the Planning Commission has corrected a number of rather sloppy ordinances that we had to deal with for. And this one though, I think is really, really complicated, perhaps more complicated than we think if we want to do it right. Anything like this that calls for classification of things always ballooned into something just amazingly complex. So we're talking about animals and classifying those animals as production animals, service animals, domestic animals. What's fascinating about the mention of the miniature horse is that in England and in the United States, miniature horses are often used by people who are seeing impaired as service animals. So someone has a miniature horse as a service animal, about the size of a large dog, is that a service animal, is that a domestic animal, is that a production animal? And is that classification even important in dealing with how that creature is housed and managed? And all of those things are just really, really complicated problems that have to be addressed, if you're going to address it correctly. In my view, if we are classifying animals and we use the word horse as anything but an example, the wording is probably incorrect. The fact that we started out talking specifically about horses and llamas is probably an indication of how that was not the right approach, the right approach may have been, to refer to the animals in a much more general way and refer to specifically to their behaviors, here's the size of the animal, it's an ungulate, it's a ruminant, and therefore, as a result of these behaviors, this is how you're required to care for the animal. I certainly think you should call upon experts, but if we start listing animals by name, eventually someone's gonna say, can I keep an emu? And I don't know if you can keep an emu or not, maybe you can, it might be perfectly fine, but hard to say. So I, I think that this is a very tough problem to address, and so I think we need to make absolutely certain that this is a big. And so I think we need to make absolutely certain that this is a big enough problem that we really, really need to address it. And I think that the proposed ordinance as provided leaves much to be desired. I noticed lots of inconsistencies. For example, 792A says rabies inoculations for animals, for dogs have to happen at three months, which means that if you're going to bring a three-month-old puppy into Netherlands from outside, 792D says that if the animal is coming into Netherlands from outside, you have to do 30 days' worth of planning before you do that. And yet I wager lots of three-month-old puppies come into town and nobody knows about that ordinance. And I, again, the problem of actually classifying creatures, if it's to be done right, is going to be a big issue. I also noticed that in the documentation, 708A was crossed out. That gives somebody five years to comply. It means you can wait for your goat to die. And that's also a hedge...
Can I just offer a super quick clarification? If that was the ordinance amendment provided by the Netherlands residents, it's not what town staff is recommending?
No, I understand, I understand. I'm just saying that, that proposal as presented seems inconsistent. And so let's maybe take a look at that. But I think that we've had tremendous input from the public and that's wonderful. And I could not be more pleased with the number of people who've stepped up and in a very articulate fashion expressed their concerns and suggestions. And I think if we focus on, on what the public provides us, and I certainly agree, having an expert involved is, is also a good idea. If we're feeling that this is really a problem that really needs to be solved, I'm agreeing completely that a subcommittee needs to step in. And I think I would just focus on listening to the public and also focusing on the actual science behind the animal husbandry that's associated with this. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thanks, Julian. Yeah, some interesting way to look at it. Are you saying that we, I mean, the subcommittee would still put together a draft ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Or, or would they...
That's certainly how it sounds, yeah.
Or would they just gather a lot of information before we decide how to proceed? I guess I was a little confused as to where you were going.
Well, I think I would leave that, I would, yeah, I would leave that to you, Steve, to decide exactly what the scope of that meeting would, would be. I'm just suggesting that if we say, oh, horses and llamas aren't enough, so we need to add alpacas, at that point, we're having to start thinking about a better way of classifying the creatures. So we don't necessarily have to name all of the animals in God's kingdom. That's, that's, that's all I'm suggesting.
And Chair Williams, Miranda, I am suggesting ordinance. I am suggesting handling it the same way we handled marijuana and the way we handled subdivision or so that we come back to the Planning Commission with an ordinance. I am, of course, very open to amending this timeline, but I, I would almost think the subcommittee should maybe hash that out based on the feedback here tonight, and we don't necessarily do it here. If it does sound like the decision is to have a subcommittee, I think the only missing piece is who's that second commissioner who would join this group.
Okay, yeah.
And I would agree with that. I, i- in the long run, I believe it is appropriate for the Planning Commission to provide an ordinance. And it, it, it may be that the, that the exploration committee, the exploration task may take a little longer in order to produce a sound ordinance. But yes, I, I agree that in the fullness of time, I believe an ordinance is what the Planning Commission should bring to the BOT.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I wasn't sure exactly if you were suggesting something else, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, I wand, I, sorry, I wandered a bit.
That, that's okay, we, we, we can wander. So is, do I understand correctly though that this timeline, Miranda, is, is just a straw person? I mean, it's not, it's not a deadline that was given to us by the Board of Trustees or, or... And so we can amend this? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, it was just a proposed timeline by town staff. You'll see the same timeline in the next discussion item. Just something to work off of, but it can absolutely be amended. And then again, my recommendation would be that that kickoff subcommittee, the subcommittee really assesses how long they would need for that additional research. And maybe we're pushing this out, you know, obviously a couple more months out and let them decide what's going to make the most sense based on the feedback here tonight.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, based on what, what Julian said about the complexity of this, which I fully agree with, I almost feel like maybe we're trying to push this thing too fast and, and, you know, we might want to do a better job. But let's let the, let's let the subcommittee may, maybe first look at that like you suggest. So the next point then would be, I'd like to ask would, if there's a Planning Commission member who is interested in joining along with Billy? Who has, who has an interest in animals?
I, I'm already on the solar subcommittee. And I hope that I'll be moving to the Board of Trustees. So I don't think I should be taking on any more subcommittees for the Planning Commission.
Okay, no, that, that, that's reasonable. Roger, you're going to be traveling. I'm actually going to be gone for a good part of the, the rest of April and early May, but that I could still, still participate in, in early April. Let's see, anyone?
I'm wondering, Commissioner, or Chair Williams, if we, I guess I don't want the, the timeline to be a deterrent for someone because it sounds like we will be just adjusting it quite a bit. And so if we need to have that kickoff meeting a little bit further out, we, what we would do is a doodle poll to find a date and time that works for everyone. And that may not be next week and maybe further out from that.
Okay, all right. So, so based on that...
Jim, how about Jim or Stephanie? You guys are fantastic commissioners. Thought to put you in...
Appreciate that, but I'm waiting for the, I, I have actually read ahead in the packet and I've done most of my studying on the parking subjects, so I'll be volunteering for that subcommittee.
He's going to be volunteering on the parking, so...
Ms. Linda?
No, well... All right. About, well, I mean, despite your travel, I really think you've got a lot of history and background.
If I knew how to run like a laptop and had a computer with me so I could sit down with people, I would do it in a minute.
Well, we might do this in person.
Yes, they don't always have to be virtual. That's something the subcommittee can assess too.
Well... Would you be interested?
Well, if no one, yes, if, I would be willing to do it to try to work within it, but I, actually, so ju- just, my, my schedule would be then after the end of May. It's, oh, it's actually, excuse me, I'm gone for three weeks. So the last week in April, I'm here, but it's going to be, I could certainly do it then. And then I'm gone again to California for Mother's Day for a week. But then actually after Mother's Day, the 10th of May, then I'm actually free all summer. So I'm just busy for the next five, six weeks.
Sure, we can do the kickoff meeting in mid-May.
Well, I could certainly do the kickoff on, on the phone and things like that. The way, you know, I was in Florida and attended the meeting last week, so I know how to do that with you.
Okay.
It's just the idea that...
You're an expert now.
Well, you, you know, then you always, if you, if I get screwed up, you call me. So if, if no one else wants to do it, I, yes, this is, like everything else, I would be glad to be representative of the Planning Commission.
And if it doesn't work out, I'll be willing to be your backup.
Team?
Great.
Okay, is there anything else? Well, first of all, does anyone else have any other further comments on this? It's a discussion item, so we don't need to vote on it. But I, I want just Miranda to kind of summarize where we would go from here based on the discussion.
Yeah, so from here, we will schedule a kickoff meeting with Billy and Roger. We would, at that kickoff meeting, assess what a anticipated timeline would be. And that would also include research of other municipalities and talking with subject matter experts. And so I think we'd probably be looking at bringing ordinance back before, a first round of proposed ordinance maybe in July or August and probably push this out an additional three-plus months or maybe there's an adoption by the end of the year.
Okay. I think that sounds reasonable. Any other comments from Planning Commission members or the public?
This is, this is May, Gerald. I, I really enjoyed the conversation and maybe have just a few things to, to add. One is, I understand that the bigger towns are more likely to have ordinances for this kind of stuff. But I go through Hygiene and Nywha a lot and those are very nice towns. And I'd be curious to see if they have any kind of livestock ordinances because I think they've kept those towns really nice. And Miranda, I can look into that if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great. Any, any help is welcome. Thank you.
Sure. Um, the other thing I wanted to, to, to talk about was the great experience I had down in Littleton. They have this farm and I brought the grandkids down there and my, my daughter. And they, there's a farm that's like eighty, from eighty years ago and one that's from 110 years ago. And they have a chicken house and a goat yard and all that kind of stuff. It kind of reminded me of when I was in New York, you know, they kept the carriage horses in a stable that was three stories high and the horses would run up a ramp to their stall. So as they say, you know, sizes and everything, it's how you use the space. And it's the know-how of the person who's doing the livestock. I kind of agree with Julian when he says that, in a way, this is a bigger project than we may expect because dogs and livestock, let's say you live in Big Springs, you have a big lot and you decide to get some goats or maybe even a cow. And the neighbor's dog barks at it all the time. So those are the kinds of problems that might develop. And I also liked what Julian was saying about let, you know, maybe it's best to define, define the groups or define in a finite way what animals you're dealing with. And it seems like the ones that keep coming up over and over again are goats. The chickens are already taken care of, possibility of other domestic fowl. You have to be careful because guinea hens are very noisy. You know, I think it's almost better to name, you know, ducks, chickens or whatever if you want to add ducks. And maybe just restrict it at this time to, you know, goats and whatever else you want to add. And then you can have a thing as Jim suggested. Let's say somebody has a big lot, a two-acre lot, and they want to get a couple of milk cows. Say that, you know, other animals may be considered based on a reasonable plan, they would then go through an SRU. Anyway, just an idea of maybe how to make your meetings really productive. And, yeah, I'll look into that, Miranda. Be fun to see if they do have anything because they're such cool little towns.
Thanks, May. And, and so as I said, I, based on your help, I would encourage the, the rest of the public too to provide any input that they see that, that comes up as we go through this. Roger?
Well, Miranda, I'm not certain, but pretty, pretty certain about Nywha. No, that's not an incorporated town, it's Boulder County. And I think Hygiene is the same thing, but you can check that out. But they might have specific codes for that. Probably that's on Incorporated Boulder County, which is probably what the draft we were looking at. But that's, it's worth checking out.
Interesting.
Okay, I think we're done with this item.
This is Mickey Osterloh again, one more time. I just had a suggestion for the matter, subject experts. You know, it was mentioned, you know, having folks that have done some rescues. I know Abby and Abby down at the Feed and Supply. I, I think Boulder Humane Society would be a good one. But the other one might just be to reach out to our veterinarians in town to get a, their say on, you know, what, what, you know, what, what, what might they suggest for healthy livestock? What, what do they need? So someone more, I guess, in the medical veterinary arena would be another person that I would include on that subcommittee. That's it, thank you.
Okay, good point, thank you. Okay, Miranda, is there anything else on this issue that you wanted to bring up?
Nope, I think we're good.
Okay, I suggest we take a, a five-minute break and then we'll come back and do the parking discussion.
I concur.
So let's meet back here at about a little after 8:50. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, Miranda.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. I think people are trickling back in, so, um, yeah. Miranda, do you want to go ahead and introduce the, um, the next item?
Yes. So this is also coming before you from Directive of the Board of Trustees. We did talk about this before, but we launched a survey regarding parking in the Central Business District. Trustee Danper and trustee Corvill helped put that together with support of Cynthia and then some of the research she had done. Uh, we had one hundred and twenty-two people complete the citizen survey, and sixty-one people completed business survey. We also kind of went through the NPP process and talked with all the respective boards and commissions, and their feedback is in here. The reason this is before you tonight, though, is the Planning Commission would like, excuse me, the Board of Trustees would like the Planning Commission to start to review ways in which we can change the off-street parking and loading code. After taking a look at the survey results, offering some changes, specifically looking at parking count in the CBD. I know the Commercial Parking Fund is something that the board would like the Planning Commission to weigh in on. So as with the last item, we are looking for a subcommittee. I have proposed the same timeline as the last one, which is not, uh, there is no timeliness on this, and so we can adjust as needed. But there, I've also outlined some additional steps town staff will be taking to address parking with other boards and commissions. But before you tonight is the ask that you take a look specifically at that off-street parking and loading section of code. So two questions here. First, we'd love to hear if you had any initial feedback after reviewing the survey results that should be considered when we're looking at parking in the CBD. And then the second question is, who wants to serve on this subcommittee? It sounds like with Vice Chair Reese.
I can serve on this subcommittee. This is Linda.
Okay. Very good. Well, that part was quick.
Move to adjourn.
Well, no, wait a minute.
Any feedback?
Just kidding.
Unless there was another volunteer.
I think you'd do a great job with that, Linda.
Thank you.
You have this, three, Linda?
Uh, so that's Jim, you and I?
Yes, yes, I would be happy to work with you on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And again, Miranda, you're going to try to keep this committee small, right?
Yes, there's so much, so I'll kind of scroll back up. We have so many things going to other boards and commissions, that there really is no reason to kind of overlap. Obviously, if Jim and Linda want to bring in subject matter experts as it relates to parking, we can pull those in, but I don't think we need other boards and commissions, because they have their own stuff to work on.
Hey, Steve, this is Jim again. I also would appreciate that too, because, uh, from that marijuana subcommittee, you know, every, every additional person you add to that is somebody else you have to try and get scheduled, uh, and make sure that that's going to work. And if it ends up being, you know, five, six, seven meetings, that can really complicate things. So I think that there's other ways to bring in, you know, the expert information and incorporate things, rather than, you know, have additional people in the, in the group.
Okay. Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think that's a good idea.
I think you should find a, there's here, not step on anybody. I think you should find a business person and somebody from the public for that committee too.
So the businesses are having their feedback added and kind of through the DVA. And so at some point, kind of town staff, we will have to morph all of this information together. And so we definitely wouldn't let the CBD go without the board or the businesses. And they're kind of set with the DVA's role.
Right. I'd bring the DDA person with it.
And there was certainly a lot of feedback in that, uh, parking survey. You know, you can see later in the, in, you know, the comments, lots of good, good feedback there for us to work with, recent too.
Miranda, do you want to summarize at all any of that, uh, the results of the survey, just in a very general sense, or do you think more has to be done to gather information?
I think there's a lot of gray, and so we tried to kind of distill it down with these additional next steps. So first being, we need to address parking code in the CBD. We're obviously issuing a lot of variances, because people can't meet their parking count. So I would say it's flawed at this point, because it's, we're looking at variances. But enforcement was a big thing. People wanted to see what's currently there enforced. We have a lot of two-hour parking signs around town. And so we are working with PD on getting their staffing up and dedicating time to enforcement. Wayfinding was a big piece, and the value of making sure there's proper signage, which the DVA is full steam ahead on. There was some talk about making First Street walkable at times and closing it down, kind of like Pearl Street. Concerns were expressed with employees opting to use kind of key parking in the Central Business District, and so ways that we can work with businesses to free those up. People would like to see town be more, more walkable, which is where we're pulling in ProTab to make sure that we are addressing trail maintenance needs and then obviously doing appropriate signage, um, through their Trail Master Plan. There was discussion about looking at town-owned lots or the right-of-way for potential parking. One of the concerns, of course, is impact on neighborhoods. So working with Public Works to see are there, are there lots that maybe don't have significant impact that could be, could be used and designated parking. Also, restriping, making sure, you know, if one person gets off, I'm sure we've all seen this on First Street or the Visitor Center, one person parks wrong, the whole thing parks wrong. And so we're not maximizing lots when the striping is not correct, so, or not there. So we're talking about that. A huge thing that came up was the need for a parking garage and talking with RCD about whether or not we could, um, work with them, support them in building a parking garage. So I will be reaching out to RCD to start that conversation. Continued conversations with Eldora in Boulder County about their use of our parking as spillover when Eldora is open in Fourth of July Hesse. Eldora was approved for their large parking lot up at their site, and so that should ideally change here next, uh, season. But continuing to work on that relationship. And then, you know, it, it's interesting, because the, the quantitative data really said people were against paid parking, but some of the qualitative data said, well, maybe I would be okay with it if, you know, locals could park free. Or, you know, there was a set amount of time that you could park free before you were charged. So we are going to look into paid parking in other municipalities, as well as like what a shuttle system might look like, where people could ideally park on the outskirts of town and be shuttled into town. So that's kind of how we distilled the information. There's so much, um, but we felt like those were the overarching themes. And so those, these different tracks here of next steps, those are all going to happen at the same time as Jim and Linda are working on the, uh, the ordinance update for off-street parking.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. So like, like we did before, I'd like to open it up to any, uh, public comment, if anyone has anything to speak on this issue. And then we'll just open it up to the Planning Commission members to, um, weigh in their, um, views and, and on the survey and next step. So anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue? Okay. Having heard no, no one requesting to speak, anyone from the Planning Commission like to add anything to, uh, their reaction to reading the, uh, the, the survey summary or comments, ideas?
I have, uh, I have a few things.
Okay. Go ahead, Karen, start us off.
Yeah, so Miranda, I looked at the statistics for the paid parking questions, and the businesses are fifty-six point two percent against, twenty-four point six in favor, and the rest is neutral. Residents are sixty point five percent against, twenty-five point two percent in favor, and the rest neutral. And I read the comments, and I believe the comments support those statistics. So I would say to make that a, a low priority, um, in the things to, to, uh, look at. And then the other thing about the survey is that there were a couple people who mentioned using Black Forest as a parking garage. And I wonder if it would be worthwhile to, um, reach out to the owner to see if that would be a possibility, be a great place, I think, because it's on the, uh, one of the entrances to town. So people could park there and then walk from that location.
I actually did recently speak with the owner of that property, um, just to get an idea of what was going on there. And he does have every intention to redevelop it for commercial space.
Okay.
So he was that interested in, we were actually approaching it for that, and then also a possibility of, uh, support for health and human service, uh, agencies. And he, he does want, oh, fully commercial.
Okay. And then I do have, um, uh, an approach to, um, the, changing the parking code. What I would recommend is to review and update, um, the parking code for all of commercial, um, properties, not just the Central Business District. And, uh, it require payment into a commercial parking fund in lieu of providing the off-street parking. And then the town could use that money to provide parking on, say, the outskirts of town. Additionally, update the cost of a parking space to be fair and reasonable to all commercial businesses. Consider that town parking may be less valuable and may be less costly to build than parking in front of a business, because it would be on the, a parking garage on the outskirts of town, not on First Street, um, not over by, um, the VNF. And, uh, also, the third part for reviewing, updating the commercial parking code is to review and update the requirements for the number of spaces based on our current transportation trends and our desires to reduce emissions and promote alternative modes of transportation, such as shuttle, bus, bike, walk, carpool. So maybe the number of spaces is less if we're looking out towards the future of having, using more alternative modes of transportation within the town. And also, uh, people taking the bus, carpooling, um, things like that. And then I, I saw in the code that no parking spaces are required for buildings that existed on March fifth, nineteen ninety-six, unless the use of the building has changed. And then the parking spaces are only required for the increased capacity. So I think that's important to keep. But, but what it doesn't mention is that whether you can pay into the commercial parking fund in lieu of providing the additional spaces. So maybe that is, um, I, I think that should be looked at. So my recommendation is to re, review and update the commercial parking code in those three steps. The add, uh, commercial parking fund in lieu of providing additional spaces for the older buildings. And then remove the three-hundred-foot rule. And I think that was put in there because there, there were not spaces available for parking in the Central Business District. So we allowed people to, um, uh, utilize spaces of other businesses, like Crosscut using the, um, bank parking. But the, the customers of Crosscut do not know that, um, they can park there. So, and it, it just, uh, it, it seems like, uh, that was sort of a klutzy workaround. That doesn't really work for our purposes of what we're trying to achieve with the, um, parking code. And that's it.
Hey, thanks, Karen. Uh, anyone else like to make any comments?
This is Jim Reese. Yeah, I have a couple of things too. I, I, my observations from the survey, uh, a couple of observations were, yes, that there was a lot of negative comments about locals having to pay, uh, for metered parking. But at the same time, a recognition that they need to have more turnover. And instead, uh, they tend to, you know, have the spaces turnover more. And of course, uh, metered parking would accomplish that. And instead, it tended to be a lot of complaining about enforcement. You know, and that comes down to how many officers we can afford to pay as well. So, you know, you put emphasis in one area, you lose it somewhere else. There seems to be, uh, from this issue, since I've joined the, uh, Planning Commission, from what I've gained is a lot of people, uh, businesses and the public feel like, uh, it's an unfair process, that there's favoritism given to certain businesses. You know, depending on which business, maybe we'll make a lot of exceptions. So I would very much hope, uh, to come out of this with the public feeling heard and the businesses feeling heard, and that we are going to, uh, come up with some kind of a, a solution, a code that's going to be equally implemented and not, uh, we're going to make exceptions, you know, based on, uh, who's on the Planning Commission or the BOT at that time. I saw one of the best comments that, that I've seen, and I think about what it's like when I try to go park, how far I have to walk when I go down to Boulder to Pearl Street Mall, and I have to park to a business. And somebody in here said, there's plenty of parking, it's just not in convenient proximity to your location. So, you know, hard, walking down two blocks from parking at the Fisherman's Lot by the community center, or, you know, parking at the church and having to walk a couple extra blocks. Maybe the issue, you know, isn't so much that there's not enough parking, it's that people want to have it right where they want to shop. And, you know, sometimes that's just not realistic. But I, I look forward to diving into this. I think there's plenty of places we can add parking in town, just not in proximity to where people want to go, uh, for the most part. And there's going to be requiring, uh, a little bit of legwork. Now, the other thing that I saw came up a lot was people complaining there wasn't a lot of signage directing people to parking. So I think that there's some low-hanging fruit we could address on this, but certainly, you know, want to come up with something that the public feels is equitably enforced across the board. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Jim. Yeah, those are, a lot of those issues actually came up during the discussions with Ron Mitchell when he was talking about his paid parking. And the other, uh, item that I wanted to add to the paid parking was that, you know, part of the reason that, that this, um, Ron Mitchell's paid parking just didn't seem to be working well was because... well was because it wasn't in sync or coordinated with town parking. So that people, rather than pay to park, would go and try to find other places to park, such as in residence, in front of residences and, and other areas, just so they could avoid. So I think we need to have, you know, some kind of coordination between the private and public parking, you know, so that it's, you know, doesn't cause an issue of people just scrambling around trying to find, you know, other places to park or park illegally and so forth. So I think we need to look at the bigger picture as well. Anyone else? Any other planning commission members wish to add? Roger?
Yeah, in the abstract, under the planning commission, one of the bullets was, the planning commission said to remove parking space count from the NFC since it is not being adhered to or enforced. I, I remember last month, I think that I actually kind of brought that up. I, I don't know, was that the total input, maybe this is Cynthia or Miranda, of the planning commission? But if it was my comment, I guess I was being wrongfully a little sarcastic and saying that, you know, given examples of ten or fifteen years that I know, or twenty years, where so many times either staff did not count like outdoor seating or bar stools as, you know. So anyhow, they came up very, very short, where people were given variances, which is actually in the code for the Board of Trustees to determine plus or minus. So I actually have no problem with the code. And if there was more commissioners, then fine, but I, I, I just want to state that I'm very much in favor of the, the numbers, whatever they might be, and the, and the new committee can work on it again. They have been reworked over the years. And the idea of if you can't meet the requirements for the parking, to very much I support paying into a parking fund. We should have tens of thousands of dollars in that account right now if we had actually pushed it through and, you know, and really been strict on it. But it doesn't matter. But just so you know, if it was my comment, that's the way I really feel about that. We actually do need to have a count and we need to have a parking fund.
Hey? Thanks Roger. All right. Anyone else? Chris or Stephanie?
And added footnote to that, the ones who get pardoned for parking spaces or whatever, that they have to pay into the fund. And another thing, when doing parking around a business or anything around CBD, look for the factor of if a fire truck can get through there. Or emergency personnel. And then have designated, designated delivery areas with this whole parking issue.
That's right. I can't, I can't remember the number of times that huge trucks have parked on Main Street and offloading and you couldn't even hardly get a car through there.
Right.
Stephanie, any comments? Are you there Stephanie? You're muted.
Sorry, there we go. I was having trouble getting a commute. No, these are good comments. I think that, the, I have mixed feelings about the, the paid parking piece, in part just because I'm unclear as to what kind of, you know, revenue that actually brings in for the amount of effort it would take to implement. So I'm not, I don't know what the cost benefit on that is. And so I had the same reaction as, question of like, in terms of how high of a priority that should be for us initially. But in general, I also think that the, one of the things that was mentioned about if, if we do go in that direction, ensuring some amount of free parking for the, for local traffic that is just trying to go to the store, get some groceries or something like that, I think is, is so important. It's that long, all day parking that we are trying to avoid so that there's turnover in those spots, so businesses can see more foot traffic. So, I was, I think a lot of, a lot of ideas here are going to cover, great, and I really actually look forward to seeing what Linda and Jim come up with in their, in their subgroup here. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you. Question from Miranda, what, what's the status? You remember that, that plan that Chris Pelletier put together, you know, some time ago? What, what is the status of that?
Which plan? There were lots of plans, but Chris.
Well, First Street, First Street.
Yeah, so we didn't get the grant for revitalizing Main Street, but we, we are looking to reapply where we would be able to focus just solely on sidewalk redevelopment on the north and south side. But we wouldn't be able to do much more than that because the grant that's currently available and rolling is only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that only goes so far. But anyways, we're going to keep our polls on other funding because now that we have transportation improvement projects, say for Main Streets, that'll connect the sidewalks from kind of RTB right up to First Street. And so First Street will, will feel odd, having that the other side, the, the west side have nice new sidewalks and First Street is still in much need of repair.
All right. Any other comments? Of course, you can always provide those to Jim and Linda as we go on. So, there are no more comments. Is there anything else, Miranda, that you wanted to bring up with this? Otherwise, we'll move on to the town staff report.
Nothing else. I'll just reach out to Jim, Linda, and we'll try to square our time to put our kickoff.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Well, that concludes the parking discussion. Let's move on then to the town staff report.
All right. First town staff accolade, Cynthia and I completed and passed our one hundred and ninety-three question exam for a zoning administrator certificate. She and I both earned that certification. I'm still waiting for mine. I did pass, I promise. But Cynthia's is here.
Congratulations!
Yes! Yay! Congratulations.
Good job!
Cynthia, I think will join me in saying, the test was hard and it was a lot of work. But very, it's a real cool accomplishment. I think we both feel better from zoning. But Cynthia, do you want to say anything about this?
Sure. It's, it's from Michigan State University, and I think it's the only one in the country. Zoning administrators existing in all municipalities and all states. It's the only in the country. And so I wish Colorado State Extension Services would do their own version of it because we had to read through some Michigan case law, which case law is so exciting, as Jennifer and Miranda know. And, you know, I asked before I took this exam, how many questions are going to be about Michigan case law? Like, how much do I need to study that? There were like five or six questions, but it was definitely a tough exam. It goes over a lot of, there's eight modules, so it's going over a lot of in-depth of liability for zoning administrators. We have more liability and much less discretion than the planning commission and Board of Trustees because basically a zoning administrator's job is to enforce the ordinance. And that's really what they would have to come back to in interpretations of ordinances, any appeals of that, any court case law about it, but very little discretion. So when you make the keeping animals ordinance clear and parking clear, it helps town staff to be able to enforce it as equitably as possible. So it's a challenge for us to try to maintain and not have selective enforcement, but really be fair to as many people. So as clear as the law is, that's what we're looking at. It was a really great program. It was, it was, it was fantastically done, I think. It was a lot about legalities and enforcement. And we have some work as staff to, to work on some things and stand on principle a little bit more on timelines for SRUs and requirements of site plans and things like that. So I'm, I'm glad I went through it. Thanks.
Thanks Cynthia, and I'll just continue to do some more shout outs for Cynthia here. Town recently was awarded the SolarSmart Bronze designation, which is really for our efforts in enhancing our commitment to solar by trying to make it easier investor for permitting. This is something Garrett McDaniel, our Sustainability Coordinator, had started, but when he left Cynthia got us to the finish line. So we have this awesome new plaque hanging up in town hall, and Cynthia is moving full steam ahead on trying to get us silver. And we just started kind of a few pieces away from doing so. So that's a really exciting piece as well. Yeah, and that, this is not what our award looks like. It looks better. Karen had, Commissioner Blaker had noted this earlier, there's a solar subcommittee that kind of came out of that presentation that Cynthia had just completed with the planning commission, I believe, last month about best man, solar, best management practices for solar. So the kickoff meeting for that is next week. And there are representatives from the planning commission, SAB, town staff, and then a, a solar installer. And so the purpose of that would be to kind of focus on the code and where can we make updates to help promote solar and make it easier for home builders. COVID update, you know, I, I take this from Boulder County, so you can review it yourself. Nederland has been trending where one percent of all of the tests administered are turning up positive, and that's been pretty consistent over the last month. It, it doesn't ever go above, you know, one, one point five percent. So that is good from a testing standpoint of where we're at. Just a reminder though, that there are still vaccine clinics at the community center and we're doing COVID testing. Well, when there was a crossing Caribou Mine collaborative meeting, One Ask was a town created website that houses information about the crossing Caribou Mine. So we have developed that webpage and you can access it in the link here. We were awarded five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Congressman Nogus for the Big Springs Egress project, which is huge. I know Mayor Larson has been working on that for a couple of years. So it's nice to be awarded that funding package. The total cost for the Big Springs Egress, however, is about seven hundred thousand, so a little bit more funding is needed. Currently working with Jennifer Walts, who is our grant writer, on securing possibly a FEMA grant to get us the rest of the way. But the Big Springs Egress Committee has been meeting to talk through next steps as it relates to bringing back the, the actual route before the Board of Trustees for review approval, talking with neighbors, and then of course, getting that funding. American Rescue Plan, Boulder County, they have two tranches of funding, I believe it's sixty-eight million per tranche, which is way more than Nederland got, who's a Miranda, we got three hundred thousand. So there are various groups that came out of that, some subcommittees, where they're looking at how to spend those millions. I'm on the Economic Challenges Committee, Karen Garrity's on housing, and Katrina Harms on mental health and social resilience. So right now, we're working on proposals for ways in which we can spend approximately twenty million dollars per committee. And we will be bringing that before the commissioners in about two to three weeks. We applied for a housing grant study. What this housing grant study would do is allow us to do, just that upgrade our housing needs assessment. Last one was done in two thousand and fourteen. We applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant and we're, we ended up using occupational tax for our twenty-five percent match. So we're really thankful to the Housing and Human Services Committee for allowing us to use the funds we gave them in two thousand and twenty-one. They in essence just applied them back to this grant. And so that was submitted and I should sign up soon if we were awarded. They were awarding pretty much every project, just as long as you have the match. Revitalizing Main Street, I just went over that, so we're doing a little more research to see if we can go forward with that. SafeBuild, trustee Corbin and trustee Taylor recommended that town release a survey to get feedback on SafeBuild. So we are asking that you take this, it's really for people who've worked with SafeBuild. Questions may not relate to you if you haven't, but we're asking that people complete the survey by Friday the eighth. From this, we'll basically compile the data, talk with SafeBuild, see if there's ways in which they can improve their services based on the survey results. We also though are continuing to, we're, we're gaining information about other companies we could go with instead, or also bringing this in-house and bringing on those personnel needed to do inspections here. Wanted to close the loop on an SRU application. Obviously, Caribou Room came before you for their outdoor sales, eating, drinking, and other commercial activities. Last year, they did postpone their hearing before the Board of Trustees, but did meet in March, they were still in March, but two weeks ago. And they approved the SRU with all the conditions that the planning commission had recommended, which is a maximum of total six variances for noise, maximum of a hundred and fifty people at the event, and then they were restricted from activities from five PM to nine. And ending with elections, you should have a ballot, hopefully you should have a ballot. Election Day is Tuesday, it's upcoming Tuesday the fifth. So please be sure to drop off your ballots at town hall or the community center or mail it to us. We, and unfortunately, the election judges are not quite accurate, so the election judges this week, this year, Andrew Bliss and Scott Poppich, but the stires would have to pull out. So they've now been replaced with Ron Mitchell and Lenny Cowles. People can still register to vote if needed, and our deputy town clerk, Macy Callagarras, made a very fun poster that you'll probably see around town encouraging people to vote. And that is our report.
Miranda, a question about registering to vote. So what qualifies someone as a resident? Is there a time period that they need to, to have, do they need to have lived in Nederland for six months? Or what qualifies them as a resident?
No, there isn't a qualification, they just need to be a Nederland resident at the time in which they register to vote.
Okay, okay.
And the one thing I would say too, to that Karen, is that we're pulling a new list tomorrow. That's for statute, we have to pull a new list tomorrow. So if someone were to register starting tomorrow, because the list will probably send us first thing in the morning, they want to make sure they come to town hall to get that replacement ballot, or a new ballot, because we won't be sending any more out after tomorrow.
Yeah, I, you know, there's quite, I've been talking to people as I walk around town, and my goal is to walk all the streets by April fifth, and I think I'll get there. And I'm knocking on doors and there's quite a few new people in town who are, you know, renting, just moved. So that's what I'm telling them to do, is go online, register with the address where you're living, and then go to town hall, they can look up your registration and give you a ballot.
Yep. And so I think you did send someone our way, the only concern is if a clerk isn't here, so myself or Macy. We will, we weren't here yesterday when someone came in, but we are here the rest, up until election. So we will be able to help anyone who comes in the door to get either a replacement ballot or a new ballot, because they've never received one, because they're newly registered.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to double check on the residency requirement.
Yeah, yeah, they just have to be here when they register. And then on election day, if someone needs a replacement ballot or a new ballot, they should actually come to the community center, because that's where Macy and I will be all day long.
Okay. On election day, come to the community center.
And we hope to not release the, you know, I think two years ago, if you remember, we released the information at like two in the morning. We are hopeful that that is not the case, which is why we added in one more judge. We need to have at least three, but felt it was best to have four to try and get those results ideally, you know, shortly after we close the, the drop-off time of seven o'clock.
Now, do you have any poll watchers?
We do not at this time. So Ron Mitchell was going to serve as a poll watcher, he was on kind of the backup list if something happened with a judge, so he's now moved into the judge role, and so there is no poll watcher.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Any other questions for Miranda on the staff report? Excellent job. Well done, as usual. Hello? Okay. Um, all right. So do we have any other business to discuss? Um, town staff, do you want to bring anything up at this point?
We do. Um, in April, you were looking at four SRU applications. And so typically the planning, typically the planning commission only handles three. A lot of the, almost all of these SRUs are contingent upon, or tied to the sale of a property. So we are struck, we really would ask that the planning commission consider hearing them all, um, either all in one night, and maybe we recommend starting at six o'clock, or potentially back-to-back planning commission meetings, so that you have an opportunity to hear all of these versus pushing someone out sixty days, as that would of course impact their ability to buy these parcels. Um, so we wanted to get feedback from the planning commission on really those two questions. Are you open to doing four SRUs in one night and maybe starting earlier? Or would the planning commission consider a meeting on the twenty-seventh and then a meeting the following Wednesday, May sixth, or whatever that is, sorry. The following Wednesday, May fourth, and breaking them up two and two?
This is Jim Reese. My, my preference would, would be to do it all in one, uh, one meeting and start earlier. That's my, my, uh, vote.
I agree with that.
One meeting, start, start earlier.
One meeting.
One meeting, start earlier.
Yep, I gave one meeting, start earlier.
Is this one parcel of land?
No, it is four parcels of land.
Four parcels.
Four different, four different types of applications.
Okay.
And three of them are, as, as Miranda noted, uh, three of them are pending potential property purchase. So that's where if we were i- in a typical manner of just taking three applications, we would have to push them out until, you know, the end of May. And so if we could accommodate them, now, we're not going to set them for the meeting if they don't, if they're not complete with their materials. So we want to make sure of that. But, but we are having a lot of interest. So if we can pack it in, start at six and get it all done, it sounds like that's the preference for most folks on the commission.
Yeah. So they have until Monday. Um, that's noticing deadline is end of day Monday. We have two, two out of four. I talked to the other two today and they both said they're on track to get us the documents by Monday. So which would leave us with the four. And we can be in person. I hope that helped the work. So we can be in person.
I'm in favor of doing that all in one meeting because hopefully I won't be there. Can't be a planning, planning commissioner and a trustee, is that right? So.
Yeah, if you were to serve as a liaison, yeah, but then you wouldn't be able to come.
I, I'm missing all the fun. Yeah.
They'll come to the board later. Um, we do appreciate your willingness. You know, I think it is hard with the real estate market to be able to, to tell someone, sorry, you know, you're, you're number four, we're not going to hear you. Um, because the two that we're waiting for are specific to purchasing of, um, buildings in town. So.
Hey, we've been talking these last few months. We, we've had plenty of, uh, meetings canceled, so we, we could work a little overtime if we need to. It'll be all right.
I like that, that process.
But we'll do it in under time.
Yeah. And there are some that we think may move faster. And so the thought was, you know, to, to work with, um, Steve, to, to set them up in an appropriate way that maybe we could knock out a few and then get into the heavy or vice versa. Um, yeah, it'll be fun.
Definitely put them in order of complexity.
Okay. With like the least complex first?
Yep.
Okay. That's what Cynthia and I were talking about this today. So, okay.
And Miranda?
Yep.
If I could please get it all on paper?
You want a printed, uh?
Just a?
Packet? Okay. Got it. Okay. So we'll still be hybrid for anyone who needs it. But I would say, and maybe trustee Taylor can comment, being in person does create a different dynamic if, if as many people as possible can come. But of course, if, if someone's not ready or not comfortable, they have that virtual option.
Yeah, the in-person was, uh, much better. It was very nice.
It's like the good old days.
Yeah. The good old days.
Well, except, except the connection kept being lost. And so the, the public speakers had to like restart. Um, but, uh, but overall, listening, um, to it remotely, it was, it looked like it was really successful, or how complicated it must have been to get it working.
Yeah, it's still, we have got some. So what we noticed is when we had a significant number of people jump on for public comment, it put a lot of pressure on our system and that was tough. And so we may be looking at someone else hosting it elsewhere. We're kind of troubleshooting some of those issues. So, so it's still a work in progress, but it, it went okay.
Okay. Any, anything else from town staff on other business?
Uh, no, I guess I'll just do a quick, another quick shout out. Cynthia is celebrating her nine-year anniversary in April, on April fifteenth.
Happy anniversary, Cynthia.
Cynthia is one of our longest, long, long ones.
Thanks for all your work, Cynthia. Thank you.
And she's still putting up with us too. That's the surprising thing.
You're still putting up with us.
Actually be one of the veterans here soon enough with Chris, with Chris and Larry leaving. Cynthia will be one of the, the longest standing, because Larry will celebrate his twenty years and then we'll retire. Yeah.
Town staff. Still standing.
Very good.
Miranda?
Yes?
Are you in the office tomorrow?
No.
No? Okay.
Friday.
Friday?
Friday.
Friday? Okay. Picture me in time for about ten-minute conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Connect back.
Thank you all.
Hey, I have one, one item I'd like to bring up.
Who was that? Was that Chris?
This is Dave. I have one item to bring up.
Oh, oh, okay.
Sorry. Um, so I was looking for a list of, um, planning commissioner contact info and I finally had to go back to two thousand and nineteen. The list was out of date. And I would, I would like to request that we update that list, particularly now that we have these subcommittees. And if someone wants to send somebody information or input to that subcommittee, it would be nice to, you know, have an email or even send a text or something like that. So would it be possible, uh, Cynthia, if you sent out, um, another request for that information?
Sure. Yeah, I had, and then people just didn't respond. But I do have, uh, some of the long timers on the planning commission, I probably still have your information. So look it over and make sure it's still accurate. And then I can add a place for other folks. And obviously I can look up on Boulder County Property Viewer and see where you live. But, um, if you want to include any other pertinent contact information, that would be great. So I'll send that out, um, either this week or next.
I think that'd be very helpful, particularly when someone needs to contact somebody else and, as I said, provide some information or have a question. It's, it's very handy to be able to do that. So thank you. And I guess if someone has a problem providing, um, contact information, then we'll just note it, I guess. Okay. Is there anything else? Anyone have anything else to bring up?
Oh, she's adjourned.
Okay.
Second and third.
Okay. Any opposed?
Oh.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for, for all your help and input and.
Everybody have a good day, good evening.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Hey, great job. I didn't think we'd get done before ten-thirty. Nice job. Way to persevere, Cynthia.
Well, wait till next.
Meeting is adjourned at nine forty. Nine forty PM.
Yeah, wait for the next one.
We'll be in charge of that one, Jim.
It'll be all right. I'm a late-night guy anyway, so it'll be all right. Thanks for all your good work, guys. We'll see you later.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye.
Good night. Hey, Miranda?